Of all the radio stations that tell you they love you, we mean it. K FUG.
Paul Kritz with your community service and we just had a world premiere of a brand new Shaq Nasty track called I Am A I. And we've never played that before on on K FUG. So that was a lot of fun. In fact, we just wrapped up a good solid half an hour of Shaq Nasty, not just because they're my favorite local band, but also because vocalist Ray Altman is is on the city council and is here, here with us live in the studio. Good morning, Ray. How you doing?
Morning.
Let me get that a little closer to you. Bring that right in there.
Okay.
That's it. Ah, so Mike Thornton and I sitting here with the city councilman, um, Ray Altman, the I wanted to go back. I had to go back and do a little Googling here to refresh myself. Now, you, you were, um, you came onto the council after Alex Campbell had to leave, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And you were the, uh, so you were the, the next vote getter in the election? Is that how that worked?
Yeah, but that had nothing to do with the appointment. Uh, the process was that, uh, anyone who was interested could, uh, put in their paperwork and, um, be considered by the council for appointment.
Oh, okay. So you actually got the job, basically.
That's exactly it. Yeah. Through the interview process of the council.
Wow, wow.
And then previously you were on the planning commission. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Since, uh, 2018, when, um, uh, my predecessor, Justin Williams, uh, left, then, um, I threw my hat in the ring for that and, uh, talked my way onto the planning.
Now, that's, that's really kind of the, uh, the seat of a lot of power here in this community is the planning commission. There are a lot of key decisions being made.
Oh, I think so. I think, um, you know, anything that, uh, you want to do business wise or growth wise, uh, the council sends it to the planning commission. Um, they review a lot of, um, of the, uh, facts. They have, uh, subject matter experts. There's a lot of stuff to consider and review before you make a decision. And then, you know, there's five of them too. So, you know, it's a, it's a great learning experience too.
So did your time on the planning commission then, did that inform any of your input? It must have, I assume, the input regarding the, uh, the, uh, the new business on Front Street that was a focus of much of the last city council meeting, getting the, uh, the use permit?
Uh, well, you know, they were working on it, uh, prior to my appointment to planning commission. And then we worked on it for, uh, over another couple of years, uh, just working on the ordinance is what I'm talking about.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Not that specific business. I, um, you know, obviously was on the council when the planning came before the planning commission, but, you know, I'm sure that they had, um, you know, subject matter experts. And then they had our new ordinance, which you could reference, which covered all of the, uh, concerns that I were hearing, um, locally. Uh, it's all covered in the ordinance if you read it.
Yeah. And that was kind of your point is that all of these, all of, there's no issue here. Everybody else is just arguing about these things, but nuts and bolts wise, what's in the ordinance and what these folks have done, they've met those criteria.
Yeah, completely. Yeah. And, and even all the concerns that were, uh, addressed on the Facebook news. Um, you know, that, uh, it's all there in the ordinance. If you read it, or if you participated in the planning commission meetings, you could have been there to hear the subject matter experts and, and, um, and everything that we had reviewed before. And then that bounced back to us a couple of times from the council, wanting us to re-review and reconsider stuff. And then, you know, we made decisions to have some business not here, you know, like volatile manufacturing. You know, there's a lot of products that come from cannabis, not just leaves.
Right, right.
And, uh, we decided we didn't want anything that may explode in our county or city. And, uh, so, yeah, I mean, uh, we considered a lot of things and a lot of things were tough decisions. But I think overall, uh, we got a good ordinance in place. And time will tell if that needs to be, uh, amended in the future.
Yeah, yeah. As other things arise, exactly.
And for those people who may or may not have been paying attention to all of this, what we're really kind of talking about now is issuing a conditional use permit for an indoor marijuana growing facility that will be located on Front Street in the old Turf Club building.
Correct. So, yeah, I want to get, we're gonna get my feet into this, this interview because I, I've, I've only known you and met you as the singer for Shaq Nasty. So, first off, before we get back into all of this stuff, how's the band doing? You guys just, uh, released a, a second album?
Yeah, we just dropped the second album, Singularity. And, um, and, uh, Greg Johnson, our drummer, is really good at making, uh, music videos. So he just released our, um, the video I was just playing and, um, uh, yeah, right now we're on a hiatus, um, because, uh, the guys need to take a break for, uh, family matters and whatnot. So, um, and really, we shouldn't be playing live right now and gathering. So, uh, it's kind of a good coincidence.
Kind of works that way. Worked out right. Okay, good. I wanted to get the Shaq Nasty stuff out of the way.
Thank you.
And go to the Facebook, go to the Facebook page, uh, uh, go to Facebook, search for Shaq Nasty's page and watch the video, the last song we just played, I Am A I. Uh, yeah, the drummer did this video and it is a professional quality, but that's really something. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Get that. Okay. So how does a, how does a little, how does a little heavy metal singer from a small town end up on the city council? Why did you want to get involved and run back in, uh, gosh, what was it? 2020, just last year?
Uh, well, you know, um, I did a lot of, you know, I thought about it a lot, uh, first, but, uh, the, the main thing is I just wanted to be more involved in the community and, uh, see where I could help out. And I did enjoy being on the planning commission. So I didn't think I could really lose because if I didn't make the council, I would still be on the planning commission, which I enjoyed a lot. So, um, I didn't do, I didn't do a lot of self-promotion and hype and signs in the yard and all that, you know? I just kind of threw my hat in the ring. And then it came, came down to it, Beau Smith and I had quite the competition there for, uh, third place. So it was kind of, uh, it was kind of down to the wire there.
What'd you think when you, when you realized, oh, my gosh, I'm going to be on the, on the city council? I mean, had you already walked away from that, that, uh, that goal, you know, and then you're, you're pulled back in?
Yes, kind of, you know, I, I was surprised, uh, all of a sudden at what had transpired. And, and so then I threw my hat back in the ring again. And, uh, uh, I don't know, I, I, it's kind of surreal. You know, I was bounced around a little bit like a pinball machine there for a bit. Cause, you know, on, uh, election day, it looked like I had won and I beat Beau. And then, uh, a couple of weeks later, Beau beats me by almost the same amount of votes that I was ahead on election day. And so I called Beau and conceded and he was like, yeah, this is wild, you know? And, uh, and then, uh, to have, you know, everything change and then throw your hat back in the ring again. I was like, okay, here we go again. And, uh, and next thing you know, in April, I'm on the council and.
Do you have, I mean, if you, you, you ran for, for a spot on the council, you've done time in the, on the planning commission. Did you, do you have like kind of an overarching city philosophy that you brought to the council? Like, what's your point of view?
You know, I, I have so much to learn first. And, uh, I have a lot of respect for, um, Pro Tem Mayor and, uh, Inscore and, uh, Mayor Greenow. And, and the guys have been doing it for a while already. So, uh, a lot of times you'll, you'll see me clam up and listen closely and try and learn. And, uh, and then you'll notice maybe at the end of a discussion, they'll go, well, I want to hear what Councilman Altman has to say about it. And I'm like, oh, boy, here we go. You know, I don't know if they really want to know it. And, uh, but yeah, I, um, I don't really have a, a philosophy, so to speak. I just believe in making sure that, um, you know, sometimes we get a little bit distracted by buildings and roads and infrastructure and all these things. And the real job is for the people. And if you're not really looking at the people and, and what's in their best interest and what they want you to do, and, uh, and what would make this town even better than it already is, which is the people. This, this, that's the reason why Crescent City is so awesome. It's because the people are awesome.
One of the things that really got my attention and, and I'd, I'd like to also focus on other things other than just this one proposed business. But when the discussion was happening, I, I thought you were very forceful in your position of, well, like, you know, what do you want us to do? Because on the one hand, it's like, we have a lot of empty business space here and a number of buildings that have been sitting vacant for a really, really long time. And so you seemed very forceful in wanting to find a way to move forward and not keep getting dragged back by the agendas of certain segments of the electorate. Does, does that make sense what I'm asking you?
Yes. And, you know, um, when, when you are a tourist and you come through our community and you see boarded up businesses year after year, uh, upon your return, I mean, that's not really the, I don't think the tourist attraction we're looking for, you know? And, uh, we certainly want to support small business. That's, that's our motto here, right? And, uh, so to have, um, you know, an eyesore like that building replaced by a business that can't even emit light. I mean, really, I mean, it's, it's a no brainer, you know?
Yeah, right.
And, uh, and you add to the small business in the area and, um, and I just think it's the best move. And, but, you know, uh, I really have a lot of respect for participants. Okay? And, um, you can be a negative participant or a positive participant, but you're participating in your community. So you have to have a lot of respect for that.
Well, let me ask maybe to broaden that out just a little bit. In your opinion, why do you think it's so hard to bring businesses into these vacant places? Because, I mean, it just seems like they kind of go on and on and on and on. And let me ask it this way. What, 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 what do you think the city council could do to help facilitate the process of turning some of these vacant, uh, buildings into, um, concerns that serve the needs of the community better?
Well, I think you, you've already seen it happening all over town. And, uh, you know, the, the city council doesn't come up with the business itself, you know? So, um, the business comes before the council. And so, uh, I think they've been doing their job just, just fine. The, the business proposition comes before the, the council, goes to the planning commission, comes back to the council and everything's considered. You know, it's not an immediate decision. And, uh, you're starting to see these, uh, empty vacant buildings that have been becoming more and more rundown as the years go by. All of a sudden getting a great facelift and, uh, and there's a, a brand new looking business there now. And, uh, you know, drive around and look at, look at some of them, um, you know, they, there's a lot of stuff they like to, you know, consider, you know, like signage and, and, uh, parking and, and all that stuff in the use, uh, the conditional use permits. But the main thing is the, the facelift and, uh, how our town starts looking prettier and prettier, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. No. And I, I mean, I'm really clear on the fact that it's not the city council's job to ensure that private business opens, but perhaps helping to set a climate that facilitates people wanting and being able to open businesses in the community.
Yeah, it's, no doubt, we've had think tank discussions about, uh, how can we bring more businesses to the area? You know, the ultimate would be to have high tech businesses come to the area, right? So, uh, we'd be up with the times, you know? And, uh, and part of that discussion is always about how do we keep our youth in the area? And, uh, you know, being 55, I mean, I, I feel like, uh, the 12-year-olds are better technically savvy than I am, you know? So, uh, it'd be nice to have, uh, you know, technical jobs here for them too. And, uh, it's on our wish list, you know?
What do you think it takes to get there?
Um, I think what it takes is, is what we've been getting lately is more and more exposure nationally. And, um, and I think that's really important that, you know, uh, we're on the map, you know? That one of the greatest things was the, the Olympics, you know, and, and our partnership with Japan. And, uh, I think all that stuff is, uh, the national Christmas trees coming through, you know? There's a lot of great things happening that's, uh, uh, bringing attention to this community. And, uh, where before, you know, it's, uh, more like, uh, the redwoods, not Crescent City is the attraction. But I think our city is getting a lot more publicity and, and people are wanting to come here and, uh, see what we're all about, you know?
It is, uh, 10:43. That's the time. You're tuned to K F U G Community Radio, um, Community Service. I'm Paul Kritz along with Mike Thornton and we've got Crescent City Councilman, uh, I guess council member is, is the, I'm trying to like stay in 21st century. Uh, Ray Altman here. Uh, so in the time that you've been on the council, have you, and I know you've got, I mean, you're not just somebody who walked in off the street and all of a sudden you find yourself in the council. You've done time in, in the planning commission and all that. Have there, there been anything that surprised you just about the workings of Crescent City or the, or the council itself that you, you didn't expect to encounter?
You know, I'm just floored by the, um, hardworking city employees. And, uh, I feel like there isn't anything they wouldn't do for me. And, and I want to reciprocate that. That's how impressed I am by it. And, um, I, I've just, I cannot tell you, um, I mean, some of these people have four or five hats, you know? They're, they're juggling, uh, different things that, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'd have a hard time with one of them, you know? And so, uh, I, just like I was telling you though, that's the people is really makes this area fantastic. And our city employees just continue to impress me.
They're, they're a dedicated bunch down there.
It really is. Yeah. And, you know, um, when we were in the, when I was on the planning commission, we were in the chamber more, you know, because there wasn't all this, um, Zoom going on. And so, uh, since I've been on the council, it's just been all Zoom. So, uh, you know, I, I, I can't wait till it gets safer for everyone so that we can go back into the council chamber and that the public can be welcomed back in to do the public comment and stuff. Cause, you know, I understand the technical issues of trying to get on Zoom sometimes. Uh, I tried to get on the town hall last Thursday and ended up on the Facebook feed. And I'm like, I could have sworn I pushed Zoom, you know? So, uh, how much easier it would be just to walk in the building, you know? So.
You also sound like the kind of person and the kind of, for lack of a better term, and, and, you know, disabuse me if I'm wrong here, but a politician who would appreciate being face to face like that with constituents, with people.
I think it's a lot more personal. Yeah. And, um, and, um, you know, to be able to see all the council members at once and, uh, to be able to see all the public too in the same spot. And, um, like I said, you know, you're fiddling with your screen. There's more people on than you can view on the screen, you know? You're only seeing like the primary four or five or whatever. And, and, uh, I can't tell you, I've scared, I scared myself several times thinking I pushed the wrong button, you know? And it's like, oh, did that say eject? I have no idea. And, uh, so I try and stick to just the mute and the camera on off buttons, you know? Yeah.
So one of the things you were talking about, safety for the city employees, one of the issues that came up relatively recently at the council was the issue of testing around COVID for employees. And what were your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, I know that, um, that there's some people who don't agree and, and that's fine. And, uh, you know, it's, um, it's a safety concern and it's, how else would you know to quarantine? Uh, you know, I mean, that's, I have other questions to, uh, to ask right back on all the questions that were asked on, uh, how do you think this is going to make things any better? Well, we serve the public, so we're going to protect the public. And, uh, I care for our city employees a lot. I want to care for their, their wellbeing and, uh, their ability to protect their families. And, um, so, you know, uh, I hate keep saying no brainer. But, uh, just until things pass, the bad part pass and we can go back to relaxing again. It's not a permanent thing, you know? Let's just work together until it passes over us and, uh, and then we can get back to, uh, real life.
Right. Well, from the outside, looking at, uh, you know, and you, you mentioned your respect for both Blake Inscore and Jason Greenow. Looking from the outside, it seems to be that there's a real divide, the kind of divide that we see expressed all over the, the county, but a real divide on the council as well as far as, as far as COVID. And I'm not saying even policy divide, but just kind of a philosophical divide among the members of the, of the council. Has that been an issue at all ever amongst the council? Or is that, that's something that, that people looking on the outside make a bigger deal out of?
Well, the way you put it, it kind of sounds like I have favorites on the council. There's Isaiah, there's Isaiah Wright and Beau Smith, who I respect just as much.
Who do you like on the council?
I was looking at.
Who's gonna give free tickets to the next county?
I mean, if I could, I would stalk Blake and try and learn more, you know, and just follow him around like a puppy and absorb it all. But, uh, no, I, I think it's a group of, uh, uh, it's a, it's a group of councilmen who agree to disagree sometimes, but I don't feel like there's any contention.
Okay.
You know, that's just after an in-depth discussion about something. I mean, it doesn't matter if we're blue in the face from talking, uh, like, uh, last week, our, our meetings went from five to 11 at night.
Right.
That's a lot of talking. I mean, we're not taking anything lightly, you know? We're really going over it. And, um, and, and, you know, we don't always agree, but I don't feel like, uh, there's division.
Okay.
I think all five of us have the same goal to work together for what's best.
You know, kind of riffing off of that question, I mean, just like a lot of communities, there is a lot of political division in this community around certain issues. As someone who is in the position of trying their best to represent the community as a whole, you know, and be a leader, not, not just a follower of public opinion, how do, how do you manage that? How does somebody in your position manage that? Because there are real deep divisions in this community around different issues.
Correct. You know, and I, I, this, this position is, uh, nonpartisan. Okay? And, um, I concentrate on that a lot. And, um, I think if you're going to try and, and do a, uh, public servant position like this, you better be able to take it on the chin a little, you know? You, you know, you gotta be flexible, you know? And I, I don't, I like to take constructive criticism too. And, uh, you know, I, I really don't know how else to say it that, you know, no matter what and what people say about you, all the words, uh, they really, I, I also wonder about the negativity sometimes about, you know, well, why is, why is this person so negative or that person so negative? But in the, in the end, we all have to work together. So when all the talking stops, let's get the job done.
I have to say, I, I like the reference you use, public servant, because I think all too often, people who find themselves in elective office at some point or another start forgetting that they're actually supposed to be serving the public. They get confused about that sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said earlier, you know, um, there is a lot of infrastructure and buildings and stuff to worry about too. But, um, you know, let's not forget the people. That's, that's what we're, we're there for. And, you know, especially if you're elected, you know, uh, they obviously wanted you in there to do something.
Right. One would hope, right?
Right, yeah. So, um, yeah, I, I think it's, uh, important to, uh, negativity makes me anxious sometimes and I get anxiety, but the anxiety passes and I get back to my point of positivity. So I, I think you have to be able to, uh, bounce around a little bit and then, and find your place in the middle.
That's, I mean, to be, to be that kind of on your toes emotionally and intellectually like that, I can appreciate that. I think that would wear me down, the negativity over a while. And I would start amplifying it, I think. I don't think I have the wherewithal to kind of come back and center myself. So I appreciate that.
I think I would be lying if sometimes I didn't get down, you know? But I spring right back up again.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think most people do.
So it is, uh, seven minutes away from 11 o'clock. You're tuned to K F U G Community Radio and we're speaking with Crescent City Councilman, um, Ray Altman. Uh, you, what is your day job? You're not just a heavy metal singer when you're not, uh?
Oh, yeah. I'm actually a accounting officer specialist, uh, at Pelican Bay.
Oh, wow. So you're working, okay. All right, all right. Has that informed any of the decisions that you've had to make, make in the, in the council chambers or in the council Zoom?
No, I do wear many hats, you know? I'm a union leader for the past 14 years. Um, and, um, like you said, I'm the front man in a rock band and, um, I've been commissioner and now councilman. And, uh, um, when you wear so many hats, you, you gotta make sure and separate it all. And, uh, so, and, and then there's a lot of strict policies out at the prison, you know? So if you would like to know anymore about Pelican Bay, please, uh, be in contact with.
The P I O.
The lieutenant, the P I O, please. Don't ask me anything.
No, 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 I've, I've, no, I've worked, I've worked out of Pelican Bay for a couple of years too with, uh, with prisoners doing a class out there. So, yeah. And now I'm sitting waiting for this surge to pass. I, I was getting my ID re-upped and getting ready to go back in the week Delta broke. And so I'm just been, oh, right, all right. So, yeah, I know what kind of, kind of crazy place it can be.
It's not that we don't work together with Pelican Bay. Pelican Bay is an integral part of this.
Very much so.
This area. So, um, you know, I'm on the citizens advisory committee and, and the P I O and I exchange, uh, updated information about, uh, the hospital and the COVID crisis too. And, um, you know, it's just that if you, the, the, like you said, the main source of information has to come from that P I O.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Talking about working with the hospital, how is the, from your perspective, how has the coordination been related to COVID between the hospital, public health, the city, the county? How, how's that all working?
Um, I, I think it was a slow starter at first and then everyone has, uh, just come together. And we, we, it's just been, um, a huge improvement over when we first realized that we were in a crisis. And then, um, we, we got help from the Senator McGuire, you know, and, um, and then everyone just came together now. And I think, uh, a huge addition to this crisis is the town hall. Like it's, you know, tonight's our update at six. And, uh, I always try and be on that because it's important to be well-informed about what's going on. And then, um, something outside of, you know, social media, uh, and solid rock, solid information, right?
Yeah. Well, and for people who are listening, uh, K F U G will be airing the update tonight.
Tonight at six. Well, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah. So, so you, so kind of from the outside, it sort of seemed like people weren't, at least some people, weren't quite convinced that things were as bad as they were. And then at some point, kind of like the lights went on for everybody that, oh my God, this is really bad. Does that make sense? That, that it took, it took, it took, it took some people a while to go, oh my God, this is really bad. We gotta jump on this.
Yeah. And, you know, um, the question's been on the table. What has to happen to convince people that we are in a crisis and that things to be, need, things need to be done, uh, must be done. And, um, I, I think a lot of us came to the realization that almost it's horrible that someone close to you has to actually pass away, uh, for you to realize that this is, this is not a hoax. And, um, and we've lost a lot of, uh, friends and, and neighbors and coworkers through this, you know? Whereas before we didn't see quite that many people passing away in our community, you know? It's a real eye opener to have a couple celebrations a life, uh, you know, a week. Whereas maybe we had it in that, that amount in a year, you know? And, uh, so, yeah, that's the doom and gloom of it.
Yeah. One, one of the things that I, I remember particularly listening to one of the updates and city manager, Eric Weir, was put in the position of having to disabuse some folks that the refrigerator truck at the mortuary was like not a prop, right? You know, that it, I, I just found that for, I found it really frustrating that with all the stuff that he and y'all have to deal with, that time has to be spent on that.
Yeah. And it's really frustrating, um, watching people walk around with others and they're, they're trying to convince them of a lot of these myths and conspiracy theories, you know? You can see it in their eyes. They want them so bad to believe it along with them, you know?
Right.
And, um, uh, I just. you just have to look at reality and the facts. And, and I think that's, uh, uh, the best thing about the town halls every Thursday is, um, you have that source of information. You know, you don't have to believe the wannabe reporters on social media that so badly want to get everyone stirred up into a conversation, which is great. It's great to have conversations.
It's another thing to be provoked into that conversation.
Right. It's almost like, uh, you click a bait. You just, you just got the, you just were baited, you know, into having a discussion about ancient aliens, you know? Oh, I made the ancient tablet with lasers, you know? And, uh, you know, the, the real, the important thing is, is, you know, hey, let's, let's, uh, keep our feet on the ground. Let's look at the real facts and let's see what we can do to help each other. Um, we all need each other. And, uh, you know, I, I wasn't kidding in the council meeting. I, I really do love the people here and I care for them and I want them to be healthy. And I don't want anything bad to happen to them or their family. So whatever I can do, I'm gonna do it. And, um, I'm not trying to infringe on anyone's liberty or rights at all. That, it's not like I wake up in the morning and go, how can I infringe on people's rights today? You know?
Ring your hands.
There's gotta be a way to separate them from the old red, white and blue.
There's a balance. There's a balance between individual rights and then like public health. I mean, those things have to work in conjunction.
Right. And, you know, public health is reality and hard facts. So we're going with that. Okay?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
It's 11 o'clock straight up. You're tuned to K F U G L P Crescent City, 101.1 FM online, kfogradio.org. Paul Kritz on this and in community service along with Mike Thornton. And we're here talking with, uh, city councilman Ray Altman. Um, I don't know. You got more?
Well, I do actually, because I, I was watching the county board of supervisors meeting on Tuesday and, uh, the issue of an effort to create a transitional tiny home village, uh, for people who are homeless was on the agenda. And homelessness has been a chronic problem in this community for a long time. And I, and I'd like to get your thoughts on what could, should, and can be done to try and make a meaningful impact. And this, my understanding is, is that, and this was once again, according to Senator Maguire, a couple of years ago, that actually Delmar County has one of the highest per capita rates of homelessness in the state. Several hundred people here are homeless usually on a regular basis. And, and so I'm wondering, uh, you know, as somebody on the council, somebody who's been on the planning commission, um, you know, what, what can, could and should be done to, to try and get some movement on this? It seems like it keeps dragging out is, is my point.
Yeah. You would hit me with the toughest question ever.
Yeah. You know, that's kind of what.
Ray, how do you solve the unsolvable?
We haven't even told you about the time limit on, on the answer too.
Oh, okay.
Just think of it this way, if it was democracy now, you'd have 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Quick, solve this issue.
I think, I think, uh, everyone's given it all they got to try and come up with, uh, something that helps the situation. I don't know necessarily that anyone's brought a solution to the table, but we are trying different things that we can come up with. And a lot of that involves people spending their own time on it. And, and it's real easy to vote yes to help someone who's just putting their time in and, and basically doing whatever they can personally. And, and that's basically what everything in this, this, uh, area needs is more people coming together, volunteering time, participating. Um, you can't expect one person or five people even to solve the homeless, the homeless, uh, issues. But, um, but we would love any solutions that anyone comes up with, you know? Uh, so far we just kind of, you know, we have the thumbs plugging the holes in the dam and trying to keep up with the, the issues that we have, you know? There's a lot of cleanup that we have to do that, that, that transpires from, from homelessness. And then, um, you know, we, we're trying to help the homeless, uh, any way we can also, and, and do it in a gentle, kind way, you know? Not like you guys get out of here and clear out and, and this kind of thing. Um, there's a lot of outreach going on in a humanitarian way. And, and that's just that. I mean, um, how do you have a atomic bomb factory in your neighborhood without people disagreeing too? You know? And so that's, that's a problem too, is when you try and do one thing, maybe set up a, a sanctuary for the homeless, nobody wants it on their, in their neighborhood, right?
Right.
And so, um, you have to still be able to skip rope with your ankles tied with rope. So, I mean, you, that's, a lot of this stuff is that kind of conundrum, you know, like the cannabis thing and, and, uh, and not wanting the, the city to look like a dump either. So, yeah, how, how do you make everyone happy? Well, you don't, you know? You just try and take baby steps in the, in the direction that all the facts dictate that that's the direction we have to go.
Just as with, uh, cannabis, when you were, you were on the planning commission and coming up with the ordinances here locally, um, there was the citizens group, the advisory group, and I forget how many people, a dozen people were on this group that Jesse Davis was the chair of for, for a while. That was, you know, kind of, they had, they had also county and city buy-in. I guess, uh, Sheriff Apperson was on this, on this committee as well. Is that something? Is that an approach that could be used with, with a, with a subject like homelessness like that to put together a, a group of stakeholders or people who can really affect change and get them all regularly in a room together discussing this issue?
Of course. It works well every time, you know?
Does it work well every time? I don't know. I mean, it seemed to work alright with the ordinance.
Yeah, I think so too. And then, um, you know, the more people that you have on a, on an issue, of course, you know, the better. And, you know, I'm a proponent of the man with the best idea wins, you know? So, yeah, I'm, I would love to have all the solutions myself and, and be a rock star in that area too, you know? But, uh, the thing is, is alls we can do is take baby steps in the right direction. Um, but yes, these committees that are formed like the measure S committee, huge help, huge help. And, um, so, and we're talking about, uh, putting together future committees too. So, yeah, of course, that would be great to have, uh, more committees helping us work on some of this stuff.
Yeah, I like that approach too.
Yeah, I, I do too, because I, I think for me, and, and disabuse me of this if it's not correct. When it came to something like the cannabis ordinance, I mean, you had, you know, county and or city staff intimately involved in helping to come up with a solution. And it sounds like measure S is very similar in some ways. That doesn't seem to happen when it comes to homelessness. What it, what, what seems to happen more is that some group of volunteers or something like that are basically trying to come up with solutions and then they come up with whatever they come up with, and then they present it to the county, or then they present it to the city. And to some degree or another, then the county or city goes, well, that's really nice. Go out and figure out this piece and then come back and let us know when it's fixed. As compared to saying, yes, we'll have our, our, our lawyer will be part of helping you figure this out. Our planning department will be helped, part of helping you figure this out. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
I, I think I get what you're saying. And, you know, I, I just reiterate, you know, um, an issue like homelessness isn't an on off switch.
Oh, no, I totally understand.
There's a lot of wiring behind that, you know? So, um, you, the diversity of problems that erupt from each idea to help some issue, uh, is another think tank on, okay, yes or no, do we go with this, this aspect of it, you know? And, and they just come flooding in, you know? Uh, the different problems that erupt from a great idea isn't necessarily a yes, no, on off switch, you know?
No, it's, it's a complicated multifaceted problem.
Lot more complicated than I even dreamed of. So.
Okay. I have, I have, I, okay. So I have a question. This has been burning in my head for a while because I've been talking, you know, with Shaq nasty and everything. Heavy metal or rock and roll?
You know, um, I've always, uh, called it alternative rock.
Oh, man. Okay.
You, you don't like that answer, I'm sure.
That's like 10th year of the dog stuff, you know?
But it's, it's only because there is no new name to give it.
Yeah.
I think we have our own unique, uh, sound and, and music. But if I had to, if I was forced to answer you, I'd say hard rock.
Hard rock. Okay. All right. Yeah. Yeah. That's a very key thing for me to understand. Thank you.
So in addition to hyping the new album?
Oh, boy.
What else would you like to let our, our listeners know about?
Um, you know, I hadn't really thought of a, a closing statement.
So you just wing it.
You know, I, I'll just put it out there that I appreciate everyone who's been really, uh, helpful and, and considerate during this crisis and have dedicated themselves to come together and try and make it a, how do I say, a better moment for, for a lot of people. And, uh, that just shows our resiliency here and how strong we are at, uh, caring for each other. And so big, big thanks out to, uh, to everyone helping and doing what we have to do to get past it all. And, and then, uh, you know, we can gather again soon and, and, uh, hang out together and, and laugh about all this stuff in the past.
I'm looking forward to that. And, and more live shows too, huh?
Live shows too, but I don't know how my band got involved in this council.
I frankly, I, I think we, I think we need more musicians and politics.
I think so too. Yeah.
More musicians, more artists. You know, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm down with that.
You guys got me good because I didn't expect that.
Crescent City Councilman Ray Altman, thanks for, uh, stopping in and catching us up and, uh, and talking. And, uh, and I can't wait. Hopefully, hopefully sometime here, you know, before too awful long too, if we can get the, if we can squeeze Shaq nasty back in here and, and do another live set on the, on the radio.
Oh, of course. We'd love to.
That's wonderful. All right. Mike, you have anything else?
I don't. Just to say thank you very much for coming in and being with us.
Thank you for having me.
Really appreciate it.
And, uh, thank you very much, Mike.
We'll, uh, we'll get this posted online. This interview, the interview will be posted online and then we'll, uh, we'll see you later on tonight at the, uh, the, the COVID update.
All right.
Sounds great.
You're moving into a land of both shadow and substance of things and ideas. You've just crossed over into K F U G L P Crescent City, California.